All right, good evening, everybody. Town Southbridge Joint DPW Subcommittee Town Council Meeting, Monday, October 23rd, 2023, at 6:00 PM. In the bedrooms room, ten items. Number one is called order. Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Shenyi?
Here.
Assistant Member Lozal?
Here.
And Assistant Member Cody?
Here.
Counselor Adams is present. We have five. Number three, forgive me, I have not done the minutes for those yet. They're halfway done.
The one with the stain, I wasn't here anyways.
Yeah. Please forgive me as I failed to do the paperwork right away. Um, yeah, doggy homework. Number four, discuss review acceptance of Amendment One to BSC Group's contract for $134,800 using Chapter 90 funds to extend the River Crane Street design to Pleasant Street and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork and entertain motion to the town council.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Majority of this will be with Peg and Rich. As you're aware, we have a project on River Crane. We received a grant. It's still in progress.
Until when, this week?
Until this week. For substantial amount of money to do from the bridge, River Crane, from the bridge to Hamilton Street. We'd like to be able to continue the project from the bridge to the Mill Street, Pleasant Street area, using possible grant money, shared streets. We need to have that design completed to be able to do that. So what we're asking is to be able to do that so we can couple everything together and have that done. So that would be the portion from the bridge to Mill Pleasant, which we have the collapsed zone in there. So we would do, that would be a big project for us to do. Unfortunately, because of the grant money we received, we're able to realize that project as a reality for next construction season, possibly, correct? I'll turn it over to Rich or Peg.
Yeah, the only mention I would make is maybe not shared streets, but we can look for whatever funding we can. But this would allow us to look for those funds. We'll have a cost estimate, and if we could try to find the funds to be able to package it with the full construction bid, obviously, we would try to save on, we would save on construction budget overall.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive to fix that collapse. You can't just fix that little section. The whole section is going to be done.
So we have any questions?
So, the shared streets money, is that's not going, if we use shared streets and get awarded it, is it going to affect the other projects where they're going for shared streets?
That's why, if I may through you, Chair, just, yeah, we're applying for shared streets for the East Main Street project. Jack, we mentioned to Jack that we will look for future funding. We're not sure what future funding we'll find for it. But first, we want to propose getting the design done before we finish the complete design for River Crane. Can we just extend their contract to finish out while we're at Pleasant, which is what we heard Town Council is asking for, to be able to address the washout and not have an orphan road? It was brought up by Counselor Marquette in another meeting. And so, if we could do the design, and then we know we have the funds for the piece, like the manager said, from Hamilton up to Dexter Russell, and then if we could find the additional funds for whatever that new design comes out at.
We'll, sorry, have the plans.
We'll have the plans in place. It'll be easier, more likely to be able to try to go for money.
I can continue.
Go ahead, yeah.
Who's paying for the, how are we paying for the design?
Chapter 90 money.
Okay.
You're good. Counselor Marquette?
How much money is left in Chapter 90? I know that we spent a lot of money on the Gulfwood Road. 100, 600, 750, we only get $5,000 per year in Chapter 90. Last year, West Street took out a lot of it. River Crane Engineering Design took out 255. I think we spent just about all of it last year. How much do we have left?
Well, he's trying to find out if there are any other questions. That's all.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I do know before this year's allocation of 471, I think there was approximately 1.4 a year.
If we got this year's money in, which, and after doing the Gelfwood Road project, we should have around 1.4 million.
So was there a period talking we did no projects? Because last year, we got about the same amount, 492,000 in Chapter 90, and we used almost all of that, more than all of them.
Go ahead, Ms. Stamm.
I can get a definitive answer to that, but I do believe that the former DPW director was stockpiling money for these certain projects.
Right.
So none of the Chapter 90 monies were expended for those projects.
Earlier, earlier this year, when I, when I did, I made a call and asked D O T and asked what we had for funding, and at that time, we had, let's say it was four, about four and three quarter million. I don't know the exact number, it was months ago, but a lot of those funds were already promised to other projects like South Street, West Street, so on. So, at the time, we had whatever the number was. Plus, this year's a lot, and was going to bring us to the 2.1 million. And then subtracting the 650,000 for Gelfwood, that puts us a little over 1.4.
I think the attendance, the Town Manager mentioned, she did, there was a reason behind why she kept some of the money, Chapter 90 money, per year, because of emergencies or anything that popped up at the last second on them. She didn't want to spend all the money in one place and zero it out every single fiscal year, and I think that was the intent on it.
What I mean, how much money, I mean, our streets have been shit for so long. I mean, I had to have my shocks remount, all to revolve in my wife's new car because they got broke because the roads are so bad.
Yep, go ahead. All I can say is, there's a new DPW Director, a new Town Manager, and we're working on it. I mean, there was a certain amount of money that was used for design, so they did use a lot of those Chapter 90 money so that we could get the design completed, so that we could apply for some grants and get the monies to do the roads. So, like Rich just said, we just spent a substantial amount to get a couple of roads fixed, and this is a good use of the money to make sure that we have this project on the books for next construction season.
Yeah, this is all good, but I mean, who was watching this before? I mean, that, yeah, I do. Horses and deads, I'll be there.
Yeah, I think, I think, I just, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, just a quick minute. To the point, Jim, and we keep saying the horse is dead, let's stop kelling, let's stop kicking, it's on the ground, it's done. That's meaning, past practices have been vast. Moving forward, we have a reactive grant for us in here that is just going high energy. We have a new DPW bag that actually is a road guide, which we never had a road guide before. And to the credit of some of the former people, there were things that came up, like, we had a million dollars allocated to Gulfwood Road. The bridge got diagnostics and it failed, the state shut down Mill Street Bridge. The DPW Director took the million dollars, did not do that road, so that did not get done that year. That one was put aside for the Mill Street Bridge. At the same time, working forward with the committee and the powers-to-be, we find out we've got other monies to pay for the bridge. That million's not going into that bridge.
Right.
So that million goes back to the magic number, when you're saying you have 4 million, 2 million, or 1.2. When the projects go and they stop, they move, they shake, that's why we have some money left over. But it's always the same money that we got in Chapter 90, is the money we have or the money that we've expended. So, we end up with Gulfwood Road, okay, which the number was just read out. Going forward, you have the balance, you have the road guide, you have the grant writer, you have the council manager in position to continue to do the roads as we are. People say nothing's happening. I turned around, has anybody drive down South Road? They wind it, they paved it, South Street coming in, it's a good dorm after the Town South. West Street's going to be outstanding. Gulfwood Road, Ellis Road, I mean, the residents up in that area have been bringing dinner and champagne to the operators on the road because they're so happy that roads are getting done. So the negativity of the past, we're trying to say, the horse is dead, let's stop kicking it, let's, let's make the difference. That's why you're here, to make that difference now.
Yeah, and I think, just to, not to make this any longer, since I've been on, the first year was kind of like, what's our plan? How's the plan working? There was no real plan, even though there was study done in 2012, but that study sat in its shell. So, they came up with another one, there's councils of degree of disagree, whatever it may be, but there was a process. We actually started saving our own money per year, instead of wait, utilizing Chapter 90 money. Now we have complete streets. We have, so, safe streets, yeah, we have that. So there's a lot of now, better practices happening. I mean, we started off with giving ourselves $100,000 a year to save up to 500, so we could do some roads here and there, which are happening. It just hadn't happened in so long that the roads have deteriorated so bad that there was no, think about the landfill, two to four million dollars per year was never put aside for infrastructure work within our town, stuff like that. So, you know, now there's a different, it's a different ballgame here. And like I said to Counselor Shenyi, you know, we'll get back and calm down a little bit. And I know Rich, the Town Manager, myself, whoever the Town Manager would like to bring in, are going to sit down and have a plan for when the spring kicks in, be it roads, be it sidewalks and stuff like that, how it's going to be paid for too, not just, I want this road done, and how it's going to work. So, I think that we're going to have a good plan, and we'll hopefully, as a DPW Subcommittee, be able to recommend to the Town Council for this coming calendar year coming up.
Sir.
Okay, one other question. We have this money, where is this money, what's it gaining for interest in this stuff?
Well, you usually have it within the Town Accountant's office, within her, I don't think it's collecting any type, is it collecting any interest at all? I'd have to verify.
Yeah, I don't know.
Chapter 96 in Mass D O T's coffers, until we ask for payment. Yeah, we ask to commit to, like, Rich will have to ask to commit to it, then the funds are committed with a contract that allows the accountant to be able to pay out, knowing it's sort of a reimbursable grant.
Do we have cannabis money? How much money are we looking at getting in? Obviously, it's a, market's flooded, so it's not, you know, when we did the cannabis thing with infrastructure, we knew that the cannabis industry's going to get flooded. So the money's not what everybody thought it was going to be, but that was kind of expected. And so now we have all these other programs we're taking a look at. I know it was Massachusetts, this guy, was it 5.3 billion dollars in infrastructure road work? I don't know if that would come to the towns. So, you never know, that's why we want to have a plan with, how do you pay for this plan? And then they go from there. So, I know we were kind of off the subject, but I just wanted to explain a little bit more. Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to say, we probably wouldn't even be talking about this project if it wasn't for a grant that just came in, a substantial amount of, because we were talking about what roads are going to do next, and this was on the radar, but when we received the grant notice, it put it to the top of the list, and that grant is specific for that location, so.
Nice to see we have people doing things now.
It's a good team effort. We got smart people in the right spots. All right, any other questions? All those in favor? Post, unanimous, all present? Five.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Number five, review discuss a sewer, a sewer department transfer request for $50,000 from Project 64870, Headworks Floor Repair to Project 64867, Replace Sewer Jet Truck to Fund Replacement of a Sewer Jet Truck. entertain motion to the Town Council for the transfer.
We'll make that motion.
Sir. Okay, Ms. Town Manager?
So, as you're aware, we've had several capital accounts that have sat for a while. Rich and I had a meeting with Veolia, James Merchant from Veolia, and viewed some of the capital projects to try to get a handle on what's going on at the sewer treatment plant, what was allocated previously through previous DPW Directors, and where could we look through to consolidate some monies for projects that will be covered forward in the, in the future, I won't say in the future, but we're working on it. As part of that, there was two accounts that we've, we've allocated this money for years ago. One was this jet truck, and the second will be the camera system. Those monies were already allocated in the capital plan. James had gone out to bid for them, and the jet truck just came in over the budgeted allocated amount. So when we looked at the projects, Rich and him had a detailed meeting about the projects, this project that was slated on the capital was able to be either delayed or to the next steps, I'll let him speak to that. But that's why we're putting this request in. I mean, it's been analyzed, Rich and James have a plan, this was the best use for us to transfer the money, so that we can get the jet truck that the department needs.
Very well. Thank you. For Rich.
Want to go to questions first?
Let's do the questions first. Ms. Shenyi?
We're replacing a truck? What's wrong with the truck that we're replacing now? Because I'll be, my reason for that is the sewer and water have come to us for capital vehicles and stuff like that.
That would be the next agenda.
Huh?
That would be the next agenda.
This money's going to us at jet truck.
Well, if we discuss it now, I understand it's a different agenda, but this is all the same vehicle, right?
I'll get my explanation.
Yeah.
All right, so, as Town Manager said, we sat down and had some conversations about, you know, where we're going, how we got to where we are, what we need to do to get things moving. There was two capital items that have been sitting there for a while that were, that are definitely needed for the department. One is a camera van, it's in the camera system. One is the back truck. Both of those are on here. I asked for them to get prices for me, they were able to get two quotes on each vehicle through state bid spec. The back truck that we're talking about now, we went through, I went through the whole spec, worked for work with James. It's what, it's going to be the most useful purchase for all around. It's able to do vacuum excavation, so we can do excavation around gas mains, so on so forth. It's the right unit for the job. So, we had to figure out how to afford it because the monies were requested years ago. Obviously, costs have gone up, so when the quote came in higher than what we had in that account, I said, well, let's, they're working on putting together a detailed report of all of the open accounts, so we can figure out what those funds were there for, if those funds are still viable for those projects, if they're not, what can we take those funds and transfer them into within this, within those projects or whatever else is there that needs to be done, so we can utilize the funds. So obviously, I didn't want to have to ask for other funding to pay the extra when we have money sitting there in these accounts. So, I asked if there was something that was not going to be used that they were aware of. They named this account that's going to end up having to be part of a larger project later on, so my request was to take those funds.
Very well. And I know, I understand where Counselor Marquette is coming from, but if we go over five, then six would be much easier just to vote on, with probably less questions at that point.
So, if I may continue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Replacing the one that we have, I just, I'm kind of opposed to this because they have come to us in the past budget, replacing vehicles and replacing at the sewer and water, just because they were old.
Right.
And when we told, for instance, Steve's, what is car? Oh, that doesn't necessarily mean that we should replace it this year because it's old. If it's, the one that we have in is still a workable and, if it's a workable truck and it's, you know, half a million bucks is a lot of money, that I would just assume go to the East Main Street project that we're going to do. But, I guess, that's the only reason, just because it's old doesn't mean that, five trucks, 34 years old.
So this, this truck, this truck is definitely in need of replacement. I've, I've got that myself.
Okay, that's my question.
So, and this was already, the purchase of the unit was already approved in the past, the funding is already in an account ready to go. It's just that, due to the, the issues and the communication and lag of however things happened in the past with the sewer department, it just was never taken care of.
Well, you know, my, I take your word, I didn't, I'll support it at this point. I mean, you're the professional.
Any other questions? Counsel, sorry.
So I'll just ask my questions about the transfer now. I'll answer my questions on the next agenda. So the Headworks Floor Repair, 64870, $50,000, that was approved in 2018, so five years later. Why was the Headworks Floor not repaired?
Go ahead, Ms. Stamm.
I'm going to go through the same thing I've said before. We had a DPW Director and Town Accountant that allocated money, and a Town Council that voted on, which I was part of, I'll admit it, but we took the expert opinions from those employees who said this needed to be done.
This is a sewer project.
It still comes to council. We still talk about it in capital. That's the way it's always been. So it hasn't been done.
Why did the sewer harbor not replace it? That's all my question.
Why, I think there was a, so I, I think what we're trying to get a handle on, that's what I said, and I apologize, I'm just not feeling well, that's all, I apologize, I'm shocked. We're trying to get a handle on all the capital projects. Why isn't it done? And how can we move things forward? So, Rich has met with, I met with Rich and who was it, the VP Operations? And we had a lengthy conversation about why is it these projects have lingered for as long as they do, where we have the water department that moves these projects along? Okay? So we had a very good, robust discussion about better communication, better planning, and let's get a handle on these and prioritize. If these projects still need to be done, how can we go about doing this in the right sense of way? In regards to the truck being replaced, and I'm almost positive this occurred, when we, we're trying to do the gas lines for the fire station down on Worcester Street, we had to rent a truck that ended up having to stay there overnight because the town's truck doesn't work. And then with the camera truck, we had to rent and pay for a camera truck to inspect the sewer lines because we don't have the thing. So these have been ongoing projects that now that we're here, let's move them forward, it's equipment. I agree, we're not going to spend money just to spend money on equipment. You have to have valid reasons and why this needs to be done. Obviously, we had detailed conversations years ago about this equipment, and there was a reason they did, why it didn't get done is, you know, there's been changes in places, so our job is to move things forward. It's going to take, you know, if we can get these, and let's make, give that department so that we can do the projects in the infrastructure that needs to be done. There's a lot of work that the sewer department has to do and inspect, but we're then going to have to provide them the right equipment. Once we provide the right equipment, then we'll raise our expectations about what they do or what reports they give to us, so that we can have a functioning system. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
And the other issue is, I don't have a problem if you want to use some money from a project that was not, but I believe it has to be closed up, the money has to go into stabilization, and then the money comes out of stabilization, and you purchase the equipment from stabilization. To transfer it right from that to another project, I don't believe that that's the way it is done per state law. I don't mind if you want to take it out of stabilization, but I believe it has to, it has to go that way first. For example, if we have an animal shelter, you can't say one day, I don't want to do the animal shelter, let's buy two police cruisers. You can't do that. You have to take it out of there, close it first, put it into stabilization, and then purchase it from stabilization. I believe that's the way you can afford it.
That's a very good point, but I will tell you, past practices has been, we transferred that money out of one account to another. We really did. And not saying this is right, I'm just telling you how, we've all been here for a while.
Departmental services have, I've read, I was in the camera planning, just because something was done wrong in the past, doesn't mean you keep doing it.
Well, that's what I said, not that that was past practice, but if there's something that we can do better, then we need to look at it. Absolutely, a great point. So we're all set there? I'll let, I'll let you, Counsel Lozal.
Just a quick minute. When you're on a Town Council and you vote something, you think it's been presented to you, the plan has been presented to you, the execution of it has been presented to you, and we sit there and we think we're doing what we want to do this, we want to buy this truck. So we were always out here and we say, it's in the capital bond, it's here, that's going to be done. We think it's done. What happens is, there's been a breakdown at the department head level where, you know, and then we had a revolving door a little bit for the, you know, the manager and stuff, we had some shortcomings. But, the thing is, I'm sitting here saying, we already did the truck. The truck was needed. And I was, I drove by and saw the fire station, the camera truck, it wasn't our truck, and the other back truck, whatever it was, wasn't our truck. So the thing was, because it didn't happen, we don't have it to do the job that we should be doing. But as far as transferring, we've always, within a department, if there's a sewer department funding for some equipment down there, we've always transferred to the other project and within the department. If that's wrong, then maybe we're going to train it out.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think we're agreeing, if he can take a look at that, and then, maybe, you could do it all in one agenda, you know, you can go right to capital and then right back to stabilization, and then vote it out and put it right back in, all within the same meeting. If we have to.
But I never took it from one department over to some other department, it was always in a department.
Yeah, absolutely. So. If we're in agreement that, yes, we want to move forward with this, I mean, I can simply change the count number to the capital stabilization account, leave the Headworks account there, and then when we review those line items, we can transfer money into that capital stabilization. No, I agree, I'll concede that, I never considered that, but, I mean, we have, there's going to be 700,000, 50, 750, 780, I don't know, but there's 53,000 or whatever it is to do, to do this project, so, I mean, I can just change it at the, or whatever your motion is, I can just change it to that appropriate accounting at the, at the council.
For the Town Council meeting, I don't think we have to do this.
Is that, transfer of that money you're taking from the transfer, is that project still going to move forward that you're taking money from?
The Headworks?
Yeah.
Well, may or may not, but now we'll just leave that money in there at 50,000, we'll just say, appropriate 50,000 or whatever from the capital stabilization account to.
What I'm saying is, you transfer this 50,000 and to capital, into enterprise capital stabilization, and then purchase it from state.
So, here's my issue, and I'll just be brief. My accountant is injured and not in, so we're, I can, we're very limited staff, it would just be easier for me to just target the capital stabilization account, because we know the money's there, and then we can work on whatever accounts we want to transfer out afterwards. I just, I mean, I don't mean to defer it, but it just would be a clean process to be able to do that, and then.
You'll make sure you put the money in there afterwards.
Okay, I think we, that horse is dead too, but I just will sit there and say, I think, as Rich has come on board, as Town Manager, we've got to move along, and, and, and there's going to be a lot of projects that they find that never got done, that was the management's responsibility, the department head's responsibility, then to follow through with money that was approved by the Town Council. And I think we're going to, as they do the research and they get the audit done, we're going to find a lot more money that's just been sitting there. We touched iceberg back in 2018, 19, we're finding some things. We're finding a lot more now, which is, you know what, I'm glad that we're finding this money and that we'll be able to help out. So, I, but I don't want any of this stalled, as we have to move forward, they need the product.
As we move forward, you're going to check with the accountant if we can do the transfers the way we, you know what I'm saying, instead of, it doesn't make sense to go from transfer to, from, from a project to stabilization, from stabilization to that project we want to do, you're just, I know we do.
I'll get it, but, I mean, it's not a bad practice. I mean, you transfer it out into stabilization, and then you account for it that way.
I think the Town Manager is going to come up with a good plan for the Town Council to vote on it.
Yeah, and I appreciate the feedback on that, and I'll, but I think just to make sure we can get this ordered, we'll just take it from capital stabilization.
Any other discussion?
Whatever you do, make sure this project gets done.
Absolutely.
We can, I'm not disagreeing with Counsel.
No, no, no.
Going forward, I think he's right. Go right down, I want.
It'll be ordered.
That's right, absolutely. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Post, unanimous, all present? Thank you.
I just want to clear, when it goes up, the account.
It's going to be capital, yeah. Actually, I'll write that down.
Actually, one question to the Chair. How long do you think before?
I believe they had it in stock, right? Did they have it? No, they got it built?
Well, no, it, about taking the money out of that account.
It'll be done Monday night.
It'll be done.
Monday night, and then we'll get the personal order created and it'll get ordered.
Once we do the subcommittee, right, so now he already knows, that's why I wrote down capital.
That way we don't end up with another account.
We're not, we're not holding off, we're not holding off, it's gonna go in front of the town council on Monday. I think he's got the gist of what we're, we want him to do, so I think we're all set there.
Believe me, my, my admin, the minute this meeting gets posted, watches the meetings, writes it down, takes care of it, so.
It's done, okay, we had a five zero vote.
Even with the numbers.
Number six, review discusses sewer department quote to purchase a combination single-engine dual-stage sewer cleaner with hyd- hydro- hydrostatic, thank you. Driven vacuum system mounted on a heavy-duty truck chassis for the amount of five hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred fifteen dollars to be funded from project six four eight seven six, replace sewer jet truck, entertain a motion.
So move, second.
Thank you. This is town, we've already discussed this, but questions of this.
I just have one question, through you to the DPW director. I'm not against buying this truck, um, but you said we had two bids on this truck? Is that, am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
How come we only get one copy from Wood and not, to see who the other guys?
Those were the, I, I brought the low bid, we always keep the second bids on, on file.
Okay, 'cause in, in the past, we've, we've had the other, if we bought a truck, the other bids were in error or something like that, that's why I just, that's why I'm asking. I'm not against buying this, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, Council Mar- Council Marquess? Yep.
Uh, first of all, the account number is incorrect. Six four eight, six seven, sewer jet truck.
Six four, what?
Yeah. So if you look at number five and you look at number six, those numbers are, are, uh, the one has six four eight six seven, the other one has six four eight seven six. So a number probably got switched around.
So again, this one's.
Oh, you know what? My apologies, you know what happened? We did catch it, and rather than try to post it at last minute, I told them that I would explain that it was our error and that we would fix it, make sure it's right and count number. So that's my, my apologies. I, I said, I didn't want them to have to go downstairs to repost late in the day and send out a new packet, so that's, that's why, thank you.
Well, then, this was, this was done in twenty twenty-one. I don't wanna keep beating a dead horse here, but I'm just curious as to why it took so long. Does it take that long to put this out to bid or something?
You just explained it.
I think, I think to be honest, I think to be honest with you, you had a change in DPW director. You had Karen, no, and James explained it to us too. He wasn't very familiar with the process, and when we explained to him what we said and what, what, what the new philosophy is, we have a project and we're gonna do it, we will do everything to make sure that it moves along quickly.
Okay.
And that's why it got the way.
Now, I did have the same questions as George earlier. What was wrong with the previous jet truck? Uh, probably miles doesn't have on it. How old is it? I, I'm going to assume that there are some service invoices or repair invoices. These are things that you ask in a capital planning committee when somebody wants something purchased. You ask, what, what's wrong with your trucks? Do you have any of those things?
The only I can give you right now is I believe the truck is a early two thousands model. Um, I know that there are some mechanical defects on the truck. The chassis, or the, the, the truck chassis is sterling, which you can no longer get parts for. Um, obviously, drive train parts and stuff are still available because they're common with other things, but any, any cab-related interior parts, ball motor, stuff like that, it's pretty much impossible to find now. Um, there are some issues with the pump itself, and I know the hose reel is fairly worn out. We had some issues with it where it was not able to function in its capacity. Um, and as Counselor Adams stated, that for the fire department project, they had to outsource a lot of that work. Um, I believe it was fifty-five hundred a day for the vacuum truck. I don't know what the camera, the camera unit was.
I remember seeing the camera truck out there, on the side.
So you just.
No, I, I think you're gonna, I know the, this information came to council when we voted on it. So we had the capital, we, you know, I think we were big on, hey, did you have the forms? But this, again, this was approved in two thousand twenty-one, never executed. So we vetted it at council and said, hey, it's a valid.
I tried going through my files.
Yeah.
Find all the information.
Trying to find information sometimes around here has proven to be difficult. So I know going forward, I've already had a conversation when we put out the capital request, you know, that we have, we follow what's supposed to be done, the form filled out, pictures, and everything that's supposed to be attached. I mean, that's my expectation there, that I was a counselor, that would be the expectation that I would put forward for information.
Uh, uh, that's a jump in, it's very disappointing to find that we pay people a certain amount of money, even if, it doesn't matter, employee of the town, and once something happens and we have an expectation that's been voted on, that there's no follow-up or follow-through. I mean, it's not, we can't follow up on every, did you take care of this? Did you take care of that? That's really the staff's responsibility to follow up on. And I think I'm, I'm a little disappointed that over these years with the multiple town managers and, and our, our DPW changing back and forth, that these things have just been dropped. The, the ball's been dropped on a lot of these things, and, and now that, at this point, what do you do, put on a whiteboard and say, you know, camera truck, you know, and, and check it off when it's done? I mean, I'm sure there's a, now Rich has probably got a process in hand to take care of some of this stuff. But I'll, Council Marquess, I'll let you finish up.
So this is a very sophisticated truck, very, very expensive. I know that you used the same truck at the fire station. My, my question is, do we really need something this expensive and sophisticated? And you said that you're gonna be using it in other areas, so let's talk about that. Where else are you gonna be using this?
So this was, this is gonna serve basically all three departments, not just sewer. So as a town, it's assigned to the sewer department, but it's still a town vehicle. Um, the DPW does currently use the one that we have, or, you know, that, if it's operational. Um, but this will also work for the water department. Again, like I said, vacuum excavation is, is a big thing now if you're working within the limits of gas lines and such. It's technically, the rules state that if you have to make an excavation next to a gas line, you're allowed to break the surface of the asphalt, and then you have to expose the gas main by hand. So if the gas main is six feet down, you're not allowed to use any form of motorized digging, you know, to, to, to find this. So vacuum excavation has become the main go-to. This unit, um, is capable of doing that, I do not believe our current unit is. Um, so it's, it's going to be shared by three departments.
Okay, so it's not gonna just be used for cleaning out catch bases?
No.
Then, my, my last question is, you said that this went out to bid. The agenda says you got a quote, so that's why I'm thinking, right away I thought, was this, did somebody ask for a quote?
So this is, this was a quote off of the state bid list.
State bid list.
It's one or the other, so you got off the state bid list. Okay.
Any, any other questions?
I think that's it, thank you.
Well, you may have mentioned this, what are you gonna do with this old one?
Uh, my intention is to trade it in. Um, so this is the full value of the current unit, so this price is likely to change. Um, we're not able to get a trading price on the current unit until we get closer to the exchange date, so this number will go down.
Very well, thank you.
If I may, yeah, I mean, in retrospect, we should've done the same thing with the ambulance. You know, we have the ambulance, I mean, they're offering us like eleven thousand, we had to go through hoops to get another twelve thousand dollars because of the change in price. And we could've simply just traded it in and.
I guess that's the way, just the intent, it may change, you never know what you can utilize or parts and capitalize it, but I didn't know.
I think you room to still trade it?
Yeah.
So just to offer some clarity, uh, I've been here for just over seven months. Um, in the seven months, I, I like to listen to things, I hear what people talk about. I don't always have the answers for things because I'm still trying to figure a lot of things out. But, uh, you know, I noticed that one of the issues of the past was there was a very large lack of communication and a lack of understanding about what happens with the sewer department. Um, unfortunately, you know, due to coming in and, and having so much to take on to my plate, I haven't been able to get to that portion of my job until now. Um, so we have, you know, started an open conversation with Viola, uh, with James, the manager, plus his boss, the Vice President of Operations, uh, for their eastern region. We're gonna try to get some things moving. Uh, we're gonna get a better understanding about what has happened there, what needs to happen there, what's not happening there. We've discussed general maintenance, we've discussed building maintenance, uh, public perception issues. Uh, seeing, driving down the road, seeing a pump station that looks like hell makes you think, well, what else is wrong? Uh, so we're, we're not trying to bombard them with things, but we also did make them aware that there is a contract extension coming up and that, you know, certain things will have to be justified in order for us to make a, a decision on what to maintain, so.
Very nice to hear.
Um, trying to, trying to get some stuff working. So this is the first step, these were, uh, I saw these capital items, these are things that we needed. I said, let's get going on, let's get me, get me some quotes off the state bid list and let's get moving. So that's why this, this came about within the last week.
Very well, thank you for the explanation. Anything else? All right, hold on a favor. Post, and Absol. Number seven, review discusses sewer department quote to purchase pipeline television inspection camera system van for the amount of two hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars to be funded from project six four eight seven seven, collection system, TV camera system, entertain a motion.
So move, take it.
Thank you, John. This is town manager.
Uh, I think, yeah, if, for those of you that have been around, I think we had a lengthy conversation about it. And Steve, do you remember that, uh, conversation about taking the camera system mounted on the ambulance and all this stuff? And, uh, the conversation was, uh, you know, they need the right equipment, they need the truck. Uh, it was gonna cost more, I think, to do the camera system into an ambulance, it wasn't gonna be cost-effective, so it's, we're gonna purchase the right equipment, there's a lot of sewer lines that have to be inspected, and coming off of that is gonna be a lot of infrastructure that we're gonna have to plan for. So they need the right tools to be able to do that, and that's why we're recommending this, uh, purchase.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, this is off the state bid.
Council Marquess?
So two hundred and fifty thousand, that's a reasonable amount for this, it seems like a lot of money for a cams.
That's the truck plus the van, so it's a vehicle.
So it's quite expensive. And you're gonna be using it a lot?
They'll be using it a lot, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Anytime they do any work, anytime they do lateral changes, I mean, just for us to do the fire station project, just to cap it and demo it, we had to get a camera system to be able to do that. If we wanna take down some blended buildings, we're gonna have to get a camera system to make sure that we cap right at the location and make sure there's nothing else there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Lazem?
Oh, the camera truck, I'm in favor of it. Um, the drum that it does saves us a lot of money from trying to locate lines the old-fashioned way, by digging them up and breaking them and, you know, what's the problem? There's a blockage. Camera go down the line, forty-four feet down the line, we gotta break. You locate, you go down forty-four feet, you know where you're working. Uh, there, there are tons of different things and reasons that, that would be used, but it's worth every dollar.
You, how much did you say it was per day to rent that thing?
I can't remember how much we were.
Well, I thought you said it's like fifty-five hundred, maybe that was the other bit.
The major was fifty-five hundred per eight hours.
Per eight hours.
But in, in answer to the use for this vehicle, so this, this vehicle is built, it's not just a vehicle with a camera system slapped into it, it's integrated, it's like an ambulance. It's integrated systems that are, that are built, and there's a workstation inside the vehicle so they can sit, if somebody can sit in the, in the back of the vehicle and inspect via, you know, TV screens what's going on. Um, where my, my intentions also is to use this for road projects as well. Um, we did a, a camera inspection of a drain line up on, uh, Dennison Drive. That's one of the roads that we've been discussing, trying to put together some sort of a paving plan for. Uh, there's a, I don't remember the size, we'll just say it's a eighteen-inch corrugated steel drain pipe that comes down from like Dennison Crosswood, the road's coming down the hill towards Old South. Um, the bottom of that pipe, a third of it is gone. We got the camera stuck in the pipe because it just drove off the edge and got stuck there. We were able to get it out fortunately, but it was, it's nice to be able to have those tools. So, you know, if we didn't, if we don't camera inspect those drainage systems, and we go and we pave the road and then you get a failure, now, you know, that's obviously not good on our end. So that's, that's just another, another plan that I have for this unit is to be able to inspect all of our drainage pipes and stuff before we do a real project.
Very well. Any other discussion on this?
I just wanna say, this is necessary. Um, I don't know, a couple of years ago, there was somebody in Brentwood Drive that wanted to connect to the sewer. Now the lateral was, the stub was there, but the town had no record of it. The record system the town has on some of these sewer lines are not there. They use that to find where that stub was to connect the lap, to connect the sewer line to it. And it's, it's a needed thing, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Very well. Any other discussion? Hold on a favor. Post, and Absol present. Uh, before I adjourn, um, you know, Counselor Shenier has been on me, and I know Assistant Member Lazo has been talking to me as well. I promise you, we're, we're gonna come with things, I just don't wanna make a meeting just to have constant discussion over, as counselors, we're allowed to ask questions to the department heads too as well. But, you know, pavement management plan, the sidewalks, we've had long discussions already how to get some of this done, a, a good, sound plan for the council. And then some of these other things from Main Street issues to maybe some contractors not doing their responsible work out there on the sidewalks, as, as I know Rich had just kinda explained it. Uh, Counselor Shenier answered one of his questions he had. Um, but that being said, I, I, if you're a counselor, by all means, you have a town manager, you have a few, you, you have the right to go ask questions, so I asked you to do that.
On Main Street, just as a quick update, we were asking you in a meeting, would VHB and the project engineer to walk through that, we're just waiting on the confirmation of the date on that. So, um, we asked for a meeting and they're coming out for that.
Okay. And if we do in the next DPW meeting, if we throw on the agenda just to talk about it, it might.
No, that's fine.
This is a quick overview of everything.
Just, I know a quick thing, um, I'm gonna beat the drum again on Dressel Hill Road. Um, you're familiar with, I brought it up to you. I mean, it's in rough shape, there's some chunks missing out of the road now. Is there any way we could make it for the winter, with, you know, spool it out? I mean, it's worse by, by the line. Charlton did some paving on their side, but, uh, and just before the business that's there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motorplace.
You're familiar with the whole situation, and even by Revel Labs, it's falling apart.
So we had a conversation about that, and we'll update the council on that, uh, whether we can.
Appreciate you.
But we, we've already had a conversation about possibly.
Can I answer a question?
Sure, if it's okay with us.
Yeah, go ahead, it's no, I don't mind, I mean, it's, we'll finish it up with you.
I, uh, so Precise Paving is, is, is working with us, trying to get back, um, to pave the top coat on Ellis and Gelford. Um, so I spoke to Kevin about while they were there, or if they have an early day on a job or something like that, he can give me a price per ton on just shim coat to seal that up for the winter so that we can, you know, stop the road from coming apart and maybe ease up on the plow issues and such. So he's, uh, he asked me to go out there and mark it out, I spoke to him Friday, and I, I was off from work today, so my intentions are to mark out the spots that I wanna shim, and he's gonna go out and take a look at it, see if he can get it done for us.
No, that was a, one of the questions from one of the residents to me, and he answered it, Rich answered it within, but I think two minutes of me actually sent the email out. Was, was there worried about the plowing out there?
Yeah, we have a conversation, we've had conversations about a lot of projects, and how we're gonna tackle this and work within whatever budget.
I mean, there's so many, I mean, you can't.
There's so many adds.
I understand, you know.
We're trying.
Yeah, that's right. Very well.
Two meetings ago, you said that Dressel Hill was gonna get us skimco. Two meetings ago, you solved that problem. We just keep repeating it, though, it's something that we gotta start doing. I wanna ask about Dressel Hill Road. Dressel Hill Road was discussed already. This is why meetings go on and on and on.
Yeah.
We already, I mean, you, you said it straight up, it is a problem. I will look into skimcoating that before the snow flies, so.
That's, that's been the goal, is to finish up, bind up the projects that we have going right now and do a couple of things before pavement plans stop and then plan out for next year.
All right, that's it.
The goal.
Most of you are adjourned.
Okay, I'm always.
Go with you.
If possible, I'd like to be part of that discussion.
On?
Pavement plan and that kinda stuff.